Welcome, everybody. It's six o'clock. We'll start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation in divisible, literacy, and pleasantness.
So, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
No? Do any select board members have any conflicts of interest to report about any? Minutes of the last meeting, we have the October 6th minutes that we got from Judy. Did people have a chance to review those?
Tammy said they're perfect, so I'm good with that.
Really good.
Thank you, Judy.
So, a motion to approve those?
Sure.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Five. We also had minutes from our work on our school board. If people have a chance to review those? Any changes to those? All right, a motion to approve those? Five. Second. All in favor? Five. And we'll be getting the October 20th minutes, okay? Have any select board members or Brandon received communications from members of the public that need to be reported?
See, communication from somebody that's on Starbird Lane that you asked to put in Wylie's Corner. Essentially, the resident on Starbird had been using the Wylie's Corner mailing address for thirty years, and then they had to go to the owner whose physical address it aligned with. She was very frustrated. I there's not much that we can do on. We don't assign mailing addresses. We assign physical addresses, and so
This is a postal service thing.
Yeah, but I think she was frustrated at the sort of lack of communication between the the two, between the town and the post office, but so I'm working on making sure that that's prevented, although in the future, working with the post office, I like, I don't think it's a a common thing that should happen. Often, not many people use a different physical address as their mailing address, so. But anyway, she was frustrated, and so I told her I would let the board know.
Anybody else have any communications to share? No? All right. The warrant that Irene sent us for expenditures. Did people have any questions about that? I had one question, Irene. Under the department summary, under planning, you've got a building permit, but isn't this money that's being dispersed as opposed to money coming in?
Yes, a building permit money is being returned to party.
So it's going back.
It is. It is a check that's going out. It's money that's being returned.
Line, and have any other questions?
Will we approve it?
All right.
And do we even vote?
Well, if we're all in agreement, that then we are approving the disbursement of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents pursuant to the warrant dated November. And since we have school board members here, you may as well point out that five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars of that and forty-nine cents is going to the stool. So, the next item on our agenda is public comment, and I believe we have some people here. Yes?
Julie, can you hear me here?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is L, and I reside in Thomaston, but I, as last year, bought property on English Town Road West. I know over the last couple months, the English Town Road West has been on a few executive sessions, and I don't believe it was ever kind of talked about publicly, so I just wanted to come here tonight to introduce myself, just give a face up to the person who purchased land on the road. Just as sort of a summary, I purchased, I, my family lives in Thomaston, and we're really excited to have my daughter here to start pre-K. It's your wonderful school you have here, and so we, we started looking at purchasing this piece of property last April, and when we were going through our due diligence for the property, I reached out to Herb, Mr. Herb, who was the town manager, also the road commissioner at the time, and I told him, you know, what we were looking at doing and saying, you know, that was a big investment, and my family would not be comfortable moving forward with purchasing the property unless we had to upgrade the town right away, English Town Road West, and also have the ability to put utility pools to put power to our property. Mr. Herb and I met a series of times and had lengthy emails back and forth, looking for more clarity. I know he reached out to the property of Butters, and it was about a period of about three to four months that we're viewing it. I know he brought it to the select board. I think it was in May of twenty-four and looked for some, you know, and sort of presented what, what we're looking for. In, on June 30th of twenty-four, we did receive a letter from Herb saying, on a town letterhead, saying that we had full permission from the town to move forward with the upgrade to the road. It was understood that my need for the upgrades for the road, and that we would be responsible for maintaining it. When a survey was done by Gartland Dorsky, they did identify exactly where the town maintained portion of the road ends, and so after we went through this process and the lawyers reviewed the letter from the town, my family decided to move forward with purchasing the property, and we closed on that in the end of August of last year. Since then, we have been plotting the development of the property in order to build a small house for my family there. In the summer, we were gearing up to do the road upgrades, which, as you can imagine, because construction is very expensive, it was quite a sizable amount of money that we did to upgrade that road so that we could have access. As you're probably aware, because I know you've had multiple executive sessions about this, it is a existing town right away. The road used to actually connect all the way to Long Pond. It was sort of a major road. I think it's really fun to look back at historic maps, and it's one of the oldest roads in that community, and it was also identified in your comprehensive plan as an area for future growth for families moving to St. George. So it seemed like a really great match for us. We moved forward. Before we went forward with the road work, a local gentleman, Justin Long, did a wonderful road for us. I reached out to the town manager and asked if there were any concerns with what we're doing or Herb's letter proving our work could continue, and he said yes. I said, great, like, we're gonna start the shovels next week. And so after we updated the road, I know Brandon's brought to our attention some concerns that were following this large investment we've made in a road. And so, at this point, I have people lined up to continue to develop this property, but every time I open a select board agenda and see the status of English Town Road under executive session, it's very disheartening for me to move forward on this project. So I just come here tonight, you know, I respect role of the select board, role of town manager here, but please just please understand that this deliberation executive session affects our ability to move forward with this project, and this is a large investment for my family, and, and certainly, we would never have bought the property and moved forward with it unless we had mission for that, so.
So, let me just, so for other people to know a little bit about what this conversation is about, this this involves a hundred and thirty years of history with this English Town Road West section, and so there has been a fair amount of investigation required and consultation with our lawyer, and in fact, tonight, we're gonna wrap that up, and, and depending on the outcome of our executive session tonight, I expect that you will very soon be hearing from Brandon, as well as the Butters, and we can try to get this resolved, because I think that's in everybody's interest, but the status of the road has changed over the years, and it hasn't been a straightforward thing to for us to get our arms around. But we look forward to working with you and the other property owners to try to solve it.
Great. Well, I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Other public comments? Yes?
Yes. Hi there. I'm Stephanie Welch. I'm here from Trekkers. I'm the executive director of Trekkers, and I'm just gonna take a couple of minutes of your time, because I just want to thank you. I have been with Trekkers for about a year, so for an organization that's been around for thirty-one years, I still consider myself very new, and I haven't had the opportunity to come introduce myself. But mostly, I just wanted to thank the town and thank the select board and thank Brandon for the support for our work. We are still making a huge difference in the lives of young people, seventh through twelfth grade. St. George has been a part of that story for, you know, almost as many years as Trekkers has been around. You've been a fantastic partner. You've been a financial supporter, and it's making just such a huge difference.
Of course, Trekkers started here in terms of
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Brandon knows a thing or two about
He knows a little bit about it, yes. I am following in some really big footsteps, so I'm very aware of that, and just very aware of how important the organization is to St. George and to our entire community, so I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for your investment, of your partnership, and your financial resources. And then, as someone who served as a local elected official, I just also want to thank you for the work that you do so hard. I know how much work it takes, what a difference you make, and the difficult decisions that you have to make, so I really appreciate that you've prioritized youth and, and the future of your community and as part of that investment, so, thank you.
Well, and that's not just the select board, because when organizations ask for, you know, donations from our community, they go before the voters, when the voters approve the budget in June, and it's the voters of St. George who have, who have done it.
So, thank you so much. Really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Other public comments? Emily?
Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Chadwick. I am here speaking on behalf of a couple of parents, St. George parents, regarding concerns about this year's youth, youth basketball participation. So I'm gonna just read you all a letter and issue you a copy to include in your minutes. It says, Dear members of the select board, we are writing on behalf, I am writing on behalf of some parents with children in the St. George Parks and Recreational Basketball Program. We want to express our deep concern about recent developments that affect our third and fourth grade girls team. We, while we understand that main law allows children to participate based on how they identify, we also believe that these policies have created a very uncomfortable situation for many families in our community. At eight and nine years old, these children are very, still very young, and parents are doing their best to guide them through sensitive topics. The most of us never imagined we would be taking part of these conversations through our youth sports at this age. For some of us, we do not feel comfortable having our daughters participate under the current structure. This is not a decision made from anger or disrespect towards anyone, but out of love and protection for our own children's well-being. We respectfully ask the school board and the recreation department to take time to consider how these policies impact all of the children involved, not just one. There must be a way to prioritize inclusivity while also protecting the comfort, privacy, and developmental readiness of every participant playing these sports. I would encourage the town to communicate clearly to these parents, explore alternative options or alternative team structures, and acknowledge that the situation is deeply concerning for many families. We want to thank you for listening and taking our concerns seriously, and we hope that we can, a constructive path forward can be found. So I, I have spoken to Brandon personally. The next step was to just bring it to the attention of the select board. I know that obviously you guys are gonna have to take some time to dig into this and see what it's all about, but we wanted to come here tonight as the basketball season is getting ready to start and and voice our concerns as to what's happening.
Thank you for sharing your concern, and is there a particular request the group is making of the select board?
At this time, no. I mean, because I think that I think as the select board, you probably need to look into the laws that are there regarding this certain situation. I think we, as parents, are going to come together and discuss what, how we feel should, we should move forward in the protection of our children. So this is really just voicing it out publicly to the town, since Parks and Rec is a town department, and letting you know that what our concern is.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment that they would like to make? Yes?
Hi, I'm Bill Torpey. I'd like to invite everybody this coming Saturday to a breakfast in honor of veterans at the Asonic Lodge, 417, right across from the post vocals in town. Don't consume free, so you're free breakfast. This will be our fourth and final one of the of the season. Look forward to seeing everybody there. And one more reminder, Breach of Course America Day is the thirteenth of December. You'll see a lot of information about on that. We're looking for volunteers to lift the six hundred and fifty breaths on veterans graves and five cemeteries in St. George, so we'll look for your support. Thank you.
Now, Bill, last year, I heard that we were the only town in Maine that was doing every veteran's grave in town, and if that's true, seems like you should alert the media.
Yes. I think the American Legion is taking a role in that, and they're gonna have the media there this year. I'm very proud of that event, that we're the only town that's doing all veterans, you know, by cemetery, so.
Okay. Any other public comments before we move on to our regular agenda? Yes?
Hi, my name is Julie Miller, and I just want to say that basketball starts in like two weeks, I believe, and that's not a lot of time, and there's a lot of upset about this issue. And I am here on behalf of my eight-year-old granddaughter who is upset about this, and I think there's just so many aspects of it. I mean, but for me, it's sad. I mean, I've been in this town with Tammy's, look at her, since I was a little kid, you know, and I went to school here, and my kids went to school here, now my grandchildren are all here, and kids have enough to deal with. And we, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm sure we're looking for your help. I mean, we need help with this issue. We can't do this by ourselves. And I know that you can, I'm sorry, but I know that you can, because I've done a little research on it. I know there's our school districts that the select board has said, nope, not gonna happen, and it didn't happen. So I know that you have influence, and I'm just really for these little kids that don't even know now what they're doing, where they are most of the time. You know, I do know my little granddaughter said, I, I'm not gonna play, because I'm not gonna play, and I'm not going in the locker room. You know, so it's, it's sad. And that's, you know, it makes me mad in a way that we even have to be discussing this, but it really is sad for all these kids. And I know that every single person here feels the same way, and their children feel the same way. And St. George School has been great. It's said for years and years, and I don't want to see that change.
There's a hand in the back.
No, no boys in girls locker rooms.
Yeah.
I'd like to piggyback off what she said and just read something from the Girl Scout right here. Says, "By Phoebe, International Day of the Girl." This is, I figure, a seven-year-old girl. "I think it's important to have this day because girls are important, and we have rights." I think that's a pretty important thing here, and my daughter's a Girl Scout who on top of what's going on with this first year of non-coed sports changed into girls and boys, my daughter now has to deal with, I mean, I can't believe we're even messing around. I mean, Girl Scouts. It says it's girls. Boy Scouts, Boy Scout, like, you want to be a young leader, you know, a young man, and you grow up and you want to just be that type of person and like, teach people the right and the wrong and what to do as an adult. And these women, they want to be brought up, but I'll tell you, it, it's really confusing when we can fuse one and two with one, maybe three, we don't know. What is it? Let's, this girl just said it. Girls have rights, and I think that's what we're all here for.
Just from an administrative, just so that folks are aware, if you're asking the select board to sort of vote and take, make a like formal decision based on this, that should be known, because I don't know that that was clear, and that's sort of what Jane was asking for when she said, is there a specific ask of the group? That way, it can get on an agenda as an item. It can, you know, every, the public will have the ability to see that it is on there and can attend, and then the select board would vote, or not, once they have sort of all of the, the laws in, in front of them.
Yeah, but just so that you understand the way that things work.
Yes.
You know, we learned about this at like four forty-five or something, so, and as you know, this is a a legal issue of some consequence, obviously, to some of you. As many of you probably know from other issues in the town, this is a select board that has consistently followed the law on even things that some members of the select board didn't agree with the law, but that has been our position. But having just learned about this, this is not something we've had a chance to consult with our lawyer or discuss as a group, and the soonest any decision could be made by us would be two weeks from tonight at our next meeting. So if, if you want us to make a decision of some kind with a particular request, then that's, you know, what we would need to hear. Yes?
I am afraid that this town becomes a spectacle for because we're all normal thinking we, we all may be a little left, a little right, or this and that, but we all come together and just want fairness in what's fair. I'm not gonna have my daughter outdone by someone who's biologically born with a stronger muscles, let's just say, than her. I don't think it's fair. What I think is fair is I don't care when you're born, maybe you like boys, maybe you like girls. It doesn't matter. We can all accept that. But what we can't accept is telling a young child at the age of third grade that he or she can be something that they can't, leading them on this road of failure because their parents obviously have an agenda, and I know I'm probably gonna annoy people by this, but this is what we all want to say out loud, is because anybody can feel one way or another, but when it comes to sports and fairness, we put you in two categories and two categories only. When you're a boy, you play on the boys' team. When you're a girl, you play on the girls' team. Doesn't care if you like boys, you like girls, e-everybody can be whatever, but you have a team that you're designated to, and you play, because know why? It's fair. That's the way you're born, and it's fair. When you're eighteen, you can do whatever you want. But in St. George School, we don't need the media, we don't need all these people coming down here and just, I couldn't imagine seeing someone way better than my daughter kicking her butt in St. Thomaston cushion, rock. I would be screaming, and I don't think anybody here wants to be part of that, but we also don't want to take our own kids' abilities, our own kids' chances that they're born and play in sport, and we don't want to say, oh, well, I don't like the way it is. I'm taking my kid out of here. As much as we all want to do that sometimes, we still don't want to, because it's just, you're, you're only hurting your own kid. But I can't stand behind and not say aloud what everyone's thinking, is that I don't want to be led by a minority of thoughts when there's ninety-nine percent of people that would agree the other way, because I don't think the world works that way. And I think we all have to come to some common ground and put our foot down in St. George and say, you can do what you want somewhere else, but in St. George, this is how it is. And I feel like I'm that, not the only person here that's in that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what, and again, I, I speak for myself, but I think what I'm looking for, for for my child is, is who is going to the law is protect this individual. They're not on our side. And you have a lot of families that this is going to affect, and a lot of children that this is going to affect, and so I think what we're looking for is like, who is going to help us protect our children? And we have the ability to do that on a town level, and, you know, like we, you know, who's gonna help us is pretty much what, what, what I feel, you know, like, it's, because the law is not on our side. And and then, and it's upsetting, not just for the parents, but for our children who should not have to decide whether or not to participate in the sport or to participate in something that their families have participated in two, in years, just because of this one individual.
Do you feel an obligation to protect the trans child?
Do I feel an obligation? I feel an obligation to protect my own child. That's my, that's my obligation.
Protect all children. Does it mean certain rights?
Right.
Exactly.
But I'm here on behalf of my own child, because I, that is who I am the parent of. I'm, I'm, I'm here for my child who would be participating in the St. George Parks and Rec basketball team.
Yes.
I don't think it's a matter of a trans child, just to be clear. I think it's a matter of identity, and, I mean, to be honest with you, the story that I was told is that this particular child came to school one day and went up to all their friends at school and said, my mom told me that I'm not a boy anymore. I'm a girl, and my name is what it is. And I think that is an agenda. But beyond that, I think it's gonna be really, really heartbreaking if this plays out and we don't have a girls' basketball team. And that's what it's gonna come down to ultimately. If this, I can speak for most, I mean, stand up if your child's not gonna play if this happens. I mean, this is your girls' basketball team.
All right, well, thank you for your concern, and we will consult our lawyer, and we will let you know if we're gonna do anything other than follow the law.
But the law doesn't apply though.
Pardon?
That's a national law.
Yeah.
No, it's the main, it's the main human rights law.
No, but if you go by the
We're not trying to get into a debate about the law. We have
Well, maybe we should.
Very full agenda before this came onto it at four forty-five.
We're, we're not
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I know.
Exactly.
Nobody's saying that it shouldn't be discussed, but when it is discussed, it should be discussed in like a proper democratic process, which means that it gets onto the agenda ahead of time, so that the full public can see that it's there and know, and attend. Like, all important issues in town. We want there to be public notice, so that everybody is aware of what's being decided.
The season starts in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
We didn't know either, you know. We had to tell you, we didn't know.
Uh, I'd, I'd hate to see it become so late, but why don't we just bring it up to the voters? I think it's, you know, I don't have a child, but I am totally in agreement with these people. Let a trans child, as Steve called that person, have his own team. And then, if the girls wanted to play a game against them, so be it, or if the boys wanted to play against them. You have a boys' team, a girls' team, and a trans team. This just seems ridiculous.
We've had other controversial issues before the select board in the last year, where members of the community felt strongly that they did not like the law of the state of Maine. And the answer, if you don't like the law of the state of Maine, is to lobby your legislators. We are in charge of enforcing the law. All of us took an oath We are in charge of enforcing the law, all of us took an oath. That we would follow the law, the state of Maine and the United States. And that's what our obligation is, so we will.
Federal government, Trump said no girls, and then Bills was one who fought it.
Right.
So we walk, we're now getting into a debate tonight, as Brandon said, it's important for. For everybody to be aware when this is on an an agenda. And then we will take action when it's on an agenda. Um, so.
I think the only thing that I would wanna put before the select board tonight is whether or not you think that there's enough urgency based on what you're hearing about the start of the. Season to schedule a special meeting next week rather than waiting.
Yeah, I think we need to let the rec department weigh in.
Right.
The school board weigh in, we can give us their opinions, because the school board, I know it's a direct team. But the school board represents the students, so I think the school board should weigh in on this too, but we should get information from the school board and the rec department.
And our lawyer.
Lawyer. But I mean, federal law is on their side.
Right, great. And state law is on the other side, so.
But what we're also doing is we're creating someone who's eight years old, like they're an eighteen-year-old with their own decisions. The decision. Is based on a parent, what we're saying with an agenda, who on top of that is also turned. Which is really gonna annoy people that aren't agreeing with me, their pre-K boy into a woman in the same time period. As a boy in third, this is not about a child. And his thoughts and his feelings. This isn't about. A person. Who is unwell, that is taking out their own decisions on their children. And physically pushing them on the rest of us.
So.
Grooming them.
Again, I just think if people think that. There are important things to be shared, it should be shared when the select board is actually able to make a decision, which isn't tonight. And so if. If. The special, the special meeting should be scheduled that.
Yeah, I think we've heard.
We'll um figure out a date for a special meeting and publicize that on the town website if you're signed up for notifications. You know, text notifications with the town, you can get a text of when that's gonna be, you can call and find out when that's gonna be.
And then when you reached out to me today, so I'm happy to reach out when we have a date for the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, we would like to, we would, if if possible, we would like a special meeting to discuss this on the agenda.
Yeah.
Steve, right? Steve? I do feel bad for that child and I do feel for that child.
Children are good, yes.
I just want you to know from my perspective that I feel like this. It's sad. It's a really sad situation and I do feel for all of the children. And we're not trying to exclude anyone, there's another team that this child could go to.
Exactly.
All boys are found.
Yes.
All right. Well, let you know when that when that'll be on the agenda. Um, so moving to the regular session.
Thank you.
So um I just wanted to, you know, I know it's been in the newspaper quite a bit, but I thought it was worth. Um noting sort of for the record what the status of our county budget process is, as far as I understand it. For reasons that aren't entirely clear. Um, for the county budget committee to, i- it's a self. Uh perpetuating committee, so. The the members of the budget committee vote on new members. And for whatever reasons, they currently don't have enough for a quorum to add to their own. Membership. So they can't move forward on the county budget um and. As I understand it, under the law, without them having. A quorum of budget committee members, they pretty much have to go with last year's budget figures. They are apparently consulting with the Attorney General's Office and trying to figure out if there's. Another way to um. Acquire a quorum so that they can move forward um. And so there's there's some uncertainty, I guess. About the um the county budget process, so I just wanted to note that. Georg, do you know anything more than that?
As far as I understand, they currently follow two directions. One is they hope that by legislator, legislative in. Uh Augusta in January, they can kind of. Uh remove that deadlock, fill up uh but beyond the quorum and then vote on the budget. So that's a route they're pursuing and the other route you just outlined, in case that doesn't work. Last or this year's budget will apply to next year, which means, well, I have this from the newspaper, which means that they have to lay off people at the at the at the jail. Um, and have to to transfer inmates to other jails. So that's the hardship on their side.
Yeah, I I know that they were considering increasing. Uh their budget by up to twenty percent, um and that obviously won't happen if they're not. Able to do that, but and also so people know, um Georg has been. His nomination to the county budget committee has been pending, but you can't get elected if they don't have a quorum, so. It will be good if St. George has a representative on that, if and when that happens. We appreciate your willingness to do that. Um. So the next thing on the agenda is for us to consider the rules and regulations that have been. Provided to us um by the cemetery committees. We thank you for your hard work on these. Um. And. Um, I don't know if. People wanted to just go, do you wanna make some? General remarks first, Patty, before we um go through with any questions or changes people wanted to suggest.
Any suggestion, uh?
Guidelines speak for this.
I think, right, guidelines are. What they are done, put a lot of work into it and we discussed it at our last.
We did it as a committee.
And um. I think they look great, so.
We have a special representative.
That person used to sit at my desk.
We try to keep those in the grave.
So I guess um. And people should just chime in with any thoughts that they had. I personally, I thought, given that. We think it's possible, if not likely, that we'll have other. Cemeteries become town-owned cemeteries. We might wanna rename it Rules and Regulations for all town-owned cemeteries, even though right now we know.
We figured it would be amended after event happened, so that's.
And it's a work in progress, so.
Um.
I don't know, we want to define, Patty, it's a long, really work in progress, we are done.
The thing, we don't have to amend it though, when that happens, if it now is just stated all town-owned cemeteries. You know, otherwise that's, it can help prevent us from working on and outdated, working off of an outdated diagram, which happens often.
Um, I had a couple of small things that I'll hand to whoever is gonna. Do at any, and your rules of things people aren't allowed to do. Which you don't have page numbers, but this is on page two. Rules for visitors, I suggest you add no camping because some of you may be aware that there were some students. Unauthorized campers there in the last couple of years. So that was one suggestion. Um. And. Probably the um. The issue of that has been subject to the most discussion up to now is the lot prices. And the different um prices for residents. And non-residents.
Can I just mention something before you go on to that, I mean, is that one thing we did. Put in here, um. Well, I kind of, we talked about it briefly and then I make an executive decision, put it in here. Is to um. Possibly offer. Just um cremations that uh plots, so instead of the four by twelve, which holds a full burial and four cremations on top. Um, is to offer a um cremation plot, which is half of that size, which would give us more plots in the future. And um because. That is the way things are going, more people are being cremated than they are, you know, being um buried in a full, you know, full burial in a casket. Um, it was something that we had talked briefly about, but looking at our. Size and what we have left, you know, it was. Something and dropping it down to a four by six, that just cuts a plot basically in half and easier on mapping. Um, from a four by twelve. I did want just to mention that 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 wasn't something that has ever been offered before.
So that's new.
Yeah, to have that size.
Um. And I guess one question I had was. Whether somebody had to be a current resident, so for example, if you had somebody who had lived here. Thirty years, but now they've moved near their daughter because they're older, but they didn't buy their plot before. Are we gonna say, no, you don't live here today? You know, versus long-time residents.
Well, the way it's it's defined is who has a permanent residence within the town of St. George or is a full-time property owner. That's how they've defined it.
Right.
So if you get into what you suggested, Jane, it's a slippery slope, because then if you say, well, you lived here for twenty years. But you moved away for thirty years. And where do you define that? So I mean, either open it up to everybody or you kind of have a cutoff. One way or the other.
And that the definition of resident was something that was in the. Draft of the prior um. Rules and regulations from the former.
And Warren.
No, from here, from.
No, no, from here, but also Warren and and and, cause we.
We went off of several other towns, we used their guidelines um to help us, you know, develop ours and um. Almost, well.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of towns don't offer burials for any non-residents. Which means they have to have lived in the town when they passed in order to be buried. Um. Other ones, they offer it. But they're uh, they definitely have rules on. What defines, you know, a resident.
What is your rationale um in forbidding? Non-residents in purchasing a twenty-four by twelve, because on the other tiers, you have a triple price. For non-residents, so what is your rationale? For not allowing non-residents to buy a twenty-four by twelve?
I think just. We um, we haven't saw, we haven't sold a lot, a family lot in. Many, many years and um that was my first reasoning and another and it's like, if they're. That much more, less expensive than out of state. Or um other towns, but necessary, mostly out of state. I can just see, you know, that that could be, you know, people being like, oh. I could buy six. Lots. A full lot here in St. George for the price of one. Um, lot in their state, when, because we've done lots of research on the prices in. Uh many states of people that. Visit, you know, Maine.
And why would that be objectionable? Somebody wants to do that.
Because it's gonna, we could lose a lot we have. We don't have a lot, you know, a lot of space left.
Look at this.
It's just an issue of finite space, as we were trying to figure out how far out in the future we can plan on having enough. Lots for everybody going forward, so it's just a means of. Conserving what exists.
But I guess I'm not that comfortable preventing somebody from buying one of the tiers. If you're gonna prevent. People from out of town buying anything. That's at least internally consistent, but you're saying, hey, you can't buy the big one. And I, conserving space, I mean. For what? I mean. For what?
For residents. For future residents of the town, the the next generation.
Residents.
You know, next generation that.
I just don't see it. You're tripling the price for non-residents for the other sizes.
Well, I, help me understand on the other side, what the benefit would be, I mean, if in fact we are trying to be mindful of the needs of residents.
How does it help us to open it up to the world, for example?
Well, in general, I'm uncomfortable with exclusion and this is a just another phase of exclusion in this town. And particularly if you're saying non-resident has to be somebody currently a resident, what if I'm here? For forty years and then I'm in Bartlett Woods, but I wanna be buried here and you're gonna say, no, you can't do that, or no, you have to pay a triple price.
Well, you could have bought the lot before moving to Bartlett Woods.
Well, let's just say that I didn't.
As long as you're a resident.
No, but I've sold my house in order to go into assisted living or in a nursing home. And I, but I wanna be buried.
Do you have a will set up?
Uh wills don't apply, no, 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 okay.
What about planning for your old?
Scott, let's go beyond that, Rodney. I'm not saying that that's this particular situation, I'm just saying I am not comfortable. With the idea that people are excluded.
We can, uh we can, I am not.
Well, it's up to you guys, you're the select board, so you're gonna make these guidelines, so we don't. We've given you our arguments, you can do whatever you wanna do, it's your guideline, not ours.
One thing sort of in line with the discussion we just had with the folks about the basketball team. Um. Remembering our process when we set the permit and use fees. Um, for the Port Clyde Landing and that was something that. In the past would have had to be uh approved by the voters, but they delegated this to us. I feel like we should have this conversation tonight, but I don't think we should vote until. The proposed rules are on the website and it. Everybody in town has a chance to read what's proposed and weigh in. And then we can vote, you know, two weeks from now or whatever, because I think it is. Important to hear from more than just the people. That are in the room right now, um for something that does impact a lot of people. And I guess on the definition of a resident, which is, I think on the last page, second to last page. I'm assuming where you say full-time property owner, you're trying to exclude seasonal residents who pay property taxes, or do you? You're not, so what's a full-time property owner? Everybody who owns property owns it full-time.
I'm not sure about that.
When you're not.
Right, so it was what.
I just carried that over from the last.
From a prior draft?
Yeah.
But but uh would the committee agree? That people who own property here and pay taxes here, even if they're, it's not their permanent residence. Would be allowed to use the residence fee, is that what?
I think that's my understanding, yes, yeah.
So so people, seasonal residents who own property here would. Be allowed to use, get the resident price, resident slash.
Paying taxes in the town of St. George, you get the resident rate regardless of whether you live here full-time or not.
Yes, the full-time. Property owner. Okay.
So you don't have to live here at all, you could have. Really short-term residents.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Or just a business. I I do just wanna point out that this, as a town, we are. Comfortable with exclusion in many different parts of our services, like we don't let somebody from.
Wait a minute, please.
We don't let somebody from Rockland bring the tra- their trash to the transfer station, we don't let somebody from. Al's head send their kid to the school because residents are paying taxes that support these services, so. This is a municipal service that is being paid for by taxpayers, we're. There, there's a lot of precedent and comfort for exclusion already established.
I guess I'm also uncomfortable with green beriums at that site because there's public wells, people drink groundwater from that area. People drink groundwater from that area, not everyone's on public water around there. And when you have decomposition, especially for green burials where I know there's no embalming. But the human body contains heavy metals, other chemicals, decomposition. Results in that material reaching the groundwater table. I'm not comfortable with having green burials at that site, even when you have a vault. The vault has a certain porosity, so after X number of years, whatever's in that vault is seeping into the groundwater table. And I just think with the nature of groundwater tables, where our ledge is in this town, that. Having a green burial area of the cemetery is not appropriate.
So but the way it's worded now, and I was actually gonna suggest changing that slightly to. And again, I don't know what page this is, but under the green burial discussions. The the ti- it could say the town of Saint George is exploring establishing new area for green burials. And then at whatever point you feel like you have addressed the environmental concerns. You could come back if if that has happened.
I think we would agree.
With that.
Yes, yeah.
I can, if we can go back to the lot prices, I just wanted to um. So for, in a four by twelve, if people had um. How many people could you bury in a traditional basket?
One full casket, and then you could also put four cremations on top.
So um. I guess what I'm trying to figure out, if if somebody who was a non-resident, a husband and wife, wanted to both. Be buried in that, in the traditional way. We're basically saying there isn't an option for that, they're they're not.
They buy two plots.
They would buy two.
Yeah, and that happens all the time.
Okay.
Or they could both be cremated, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, and that happens as well.
Right, sure.
More cremation these days.
It is, yeah, very, um I would say probably two thirds are cremations now and um. But those that are, you know, determined to have full burials in caskets, it's totally fine and they buy two plots.
And and I applaud you for looking into green burials, I mean.
We had um.
Environmentally.
Yeah, we, they came to us, they, the committee, their committee came to us and did a wonderful presentation and we. Will have them back, um I hear from them all the time. And um I told them that we're working, we have been working on this for months and. That they um can come back and talk to us again, so we will do some more exploring as well.
Um on that. Um under the lot prices, the next heading is lots are not to be subdivided and you. You have in this draft that um lots have to be sold by the original purchaser at the original price. What's was the reason for that?
That's a state law.
Oh, it is?
Yes, so if somebody purchase a plot, purchases a plot. And then they decide they don't want to be buried here anymore and they want to sell it, they can sell it back to the town or they can sell it themselves. But it has to be for the price that they paid, and that is a state law.
Okay, that, because that's not the law.
Speculation out of it.
What, and what about transferring it as a gift to your family member?
Yeah, that can be done is um like that is a spot in, that is in here. Um just the proper paperwork has to be filed with town, um.
So if that's permissible.
The next page, Jane, I think the top F is, talks about that.
Right, but this, this is um inheritance rights or the rights of a spouse. That the descent of title, that doesn't address transfer title, like while you're alive. You decide, you know, I've moved near my daughter now, but my son lives in. Town in Harbor and you want to transfer it to him, that wouldn't, the descent of title language wouldn't apply. So if you're gonna permit people, I mean, if main law allows, and I assume it does, permit people to transfer as a gift.
That, yeah.
A lot, then I think we should specify that.
Pardon?
Would somebody have to be resident, in other words, somebody buys a plot.
Who is a resident.
Transfer some of that.
Right.
And there are four, four cremations in there, but one of them is for your son who lives in New York, is that an issue?
I guess that's something you guys would need to make a recommendation to us about, I mean, I think if, like you said, there's. We could really get in the weeds with this, but if if somebody who was a resident. Well, but if somebody who was a resident paid the resident price and they. You know, in the end, for whatever reasons, they're not gonna use it, but they want to transfer it to a family member, you know, I under, I would understand if. It sounds like, you know, the lot is, other wouldn't let you transfer it probably beyond. Family members, but I don't know, I guess that's just a question I have that should be clarified.
Yeah, I'll look that up and put that in the. With more details.
So does anybody else have a question, because I have one more at least, one or two more. Um in the perpetual care section, the language is. Reasonable and practical care of the lots and parking lot and all that kind of stuff. Um is that the standard language that?
And all the other, yeah, um towns that we looked at.
And then the last sentence in that paragraph. That the town isn't obligated to do any special or unusual work. I guess I was just wondering if that was too vague, um to be enforceable, when do we? Unusual work, since. Rules adopted.
Responsible for the stones.
Right.
All, so we are only responsible, and we're not even responsible for. And the town, if you want to change that, and the town be responsible for, say. The ground sinking or whatever, and that becoming an issue and. More gravel or stuff has to be put in, then that is certainly something that. If you're, want the town to be responsible for, that is something that can be. Maybe more specified so that it's not so vague, but it's always been that we only. Perpetual care has been mowing and trimming of the lot that has been.
Yeah, I just wondered if somebody were reading these. And it says that the town isn't responsible for special or unusual work, would that, would they be able to figure out what we're talking about?
Okay.
You know, I don't know. Well, I mean, I think. We should say what we're, what we're responsible for and then beyond that, we're not.
Okay.
Right.
It's already in perpetual care.
Perpetual care is defined.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So that can just be taken out?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fun.
You know, you could end the sentence earlier, you know, like we're not gonna take care of the stones and stuff.
So kind of ended at placed upon the lot?
Yeah.
And then get rid of the rest of that?
Yeah.
That's fun.
Yeah, so my only other. Question was about exploring establishing green burials.
Okay, yeah.
So um. So I can give you my little.
Yeah.
Things and. If other people are in agreement with as far as our process, that we could have the committee. Revise these little things and then we post it on the website and let the community know this is gonna be on the agenda. On November seventeenth, and if people have questions or concerns, then they can weigh in, yeah?
Um, actually, this is just by ignorance, are people able to comment online? So something that we post this up, and members of the community make comments about it, no, it's up there to.
They, right, they can call Brandon or any of us, they email us, we hear from people all different ways. And of course, they can come, they can be on Zoom, but it's just, I think, important. As we said earlier, for everybody in town to know what's proposed before we vote on it.
I'd like to think the committee.
Yeah, you, I know you guys have worked hard on this for a year, so we appreciate it.
Yes, it's been, no, not just me, this has been a very full committee um intend. Intensive meetings, let me tell you, so, yeah.
Extra meetings.
Yeah, and extra meetings, yeah, so we appreciate you reading this and saying.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
So, thank you.
No.
No.
You can't leave now.
So our, the next item on our agenda, um. What is the select board, draft select board policy on um delegating the town manager? Like their license approvals?
I was, I think, I I misunderstood some statute around it. I was under the impression, or I wasn't aware that um officials and officers were carrying different definitions. And so. I mean, a municipal official like you are, but I'm not a municipal officer, and so I think that. Does have a remote place of municipal office.
Yeah, I had just asked Brandon if he really thought we could delegate this, and we concluded we cannot.
Sounds off the check.
We're scratching this agenda item and we are, those will just be quickly approved. So we could, I I guess we probably should do it, I was gonna bump the, where we are till next time, but it. Seems to me like we're gonna have a lot on our plates in the last, in the next two meetings, so um. Reviewing the select board priorities for the coming year, we're almost halfway through our fiscal year. The first priority was about improving communications. Um with residents and I think all the committees are doing a great job of. Um updating information on their committee's webpage. Um I know at voting day tomorrow, Bill Batty's. Gonna be encouraging anybody who wants to sign up for text or email notifications to do that and. So I think we're working hard on the first priority for the year. The second one is about engaging in a fundraising campaign to raise money for the Snow's Point recreational property. And um Brandon and Ashley and the Parks and Rec Committee will be. Um looking at that this winter, n- next steps about that.
I'm trying to get some of the initial work done so that we can have some, an event in there so that people can begin to see the space and all that.
Is there any progress on that, getting workers in there or anything?
No.
Estimates even.
Um, no, not, none that can get in there sooner than January at this point, so I'm still looking, working on that. There's a good chance that um. We'll do some of the work internally, you know, in half weekend. But if anybody knows of the contractor who wants to take on some work, please uh reach out to them.
So that is underway, shall we say. Um number three was to improve understanding of the legal and fiscal interrelationship. Between the town and the municipal school unit. And improve communications with the school board around fiscal matters, and we did have our workshop with them. Um and you and Christina met recently, right?
Yep.
Um so I feel like we're moving along on that goal for the year. Um considering how the town might monitor short term rentals. Including a registry and inspection program like Camden has. Um as we discussed, we're gonna have a community conversation about that in the spring and. I'm meeting with um a couple of people next week or the following week. Um Erin will be putting that together for us, but. So once we have a little more homework done on that, we'll get that on the calendar. Um and then the last of our five top priorities was. Exploring the acquisition of additional land for conservation or preservation. Either by donation or setting aside additional funding to purchase property for um conservation and. That is um something the ad hoc open space committee will be working on and. I'm happy to report that we've had so many people express interest in serving on that committee, we're gonna have some hard choices to make. Um I mean, we probably had ten people already say they're interested, so um. Steve and Ken Olberger and I are gonna, are splitting up, talking to all the people that have said they're interested in. Um we'll bring the nominations to everybody.
And if we're restricted to seven members in the committee, then we'll tell the other people, please come and participate, I mean, your voice can be heard.
Right. And that's something, I keep a running list of things that maybe we should. Think about changing the town charter, you know, like um. When Bennett dropped out and we, we didn't have an ability to have the top two vote getters. Take a seat, that's on the list of things that we could change in the town charter. And I, I think we should at least talk about. Whether ad hoc committees like this need to be limited to five members with two alternates like our permanent committees.
Couldn't it be a commission instead of a, like a conservation?
That's, that's a statutory thing, a commission.
Okay, that one comes under state law.
So, so I, you know, because I think if you have ten people that would love to work on this. I'm eager to have them do it, um and the way we'll do that is we'll just tell them, come to the meeting, even if you're not a member and. Provide your input and persuade the voting members.
That's interesting, that's, that's a charter thing, that's.
It is, that's in the charter. No, the budget committee is same, every committee is, well, the Parks and Rec Committee, there's, but that's.
Their policy, their.
There are select board policy created. So.
We had ten a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we, we're not exactly. Strictly.
Was there a way that this ad hoc committee could be created via a select board policy though, that would allow all those members to?
Might not want them all if they're talking to them.
True. Yeah, well, we should think about that when we meet, and if we, maybe we'll bring that back so that we can. Include more, because I'm eager to have as many perspectives. Um. So there were some other things on here, but those were the top priorities for the year, so I'm happy to say we are moving along on all of them. Um there is a meeting, you're probably aware. Uh about the status of Cold Storage Road and Factory Road. This, are they meeting with the resilience committee or the engineers or who are they meeting with?
That, that meeting, are you talking about the property owners meeting?
Yeah.
That is just a meeting be- between the committee and the property owners on those roads. And it's only held by Zoom. And it's only held by Zoom. There's no physical meeting.
They won't have uh some of the consultants.
There will be from the, from the committee.
Yeah, I, I guess my question arose because of a post on Facebook that made it seem like it was anybody who cares about those roads in Port Clyde.
I thought it said pretty explicitly who should attend and the answer were property owners on these two roads.
Well, there's another meeting, a, a larger public meeting on the twentieth of November that's gonna be here. And that's gonna be more inclusive, but they wanted to give a chance for the property owners to really discuss how this is going to affect their property and give them a forum where they could be focused on particular properties.
Okay. So that's the meeting on the thirteenth and then.
That's the thirteenth. The November twentieth meeting is four thirty to six here.
Okay. Um, and I'll also remind people about this um panel discussion on November thirteenth from five to six thirty upstairs. That includes dinner and it's a panel with um people who've started and operate um fishing and aquaculture businesses in our town so that they can talk about how that works, what the challenges are and how we can support them buying their products.
Uh Jane, is it, hi, this Larry Anderson on Zoom. Um, I've not heard anything about this November thirteen meeting and I'm a property owner on Cold Storage Road. I'm curious why I haven't heard about this.
It's a good question, Larry. I think you should have heard about it a while ago. Um, it is. This postcard that uh Jane is referring to um was just shared with the town at the end of last week. And so we began putting it uh up on our channels and.
I can email it through Larry.
Okay, and it's, what is it? You say it's a Zoom meeting?
Yes, they, they wanted, they asked the town to hand deliver the postcards. I shared with them that maybe four people on that list were still in town and that many folks were not. Um, and so anyway, we, we're, we're working out to get it out um to folks uh that do live on the two roads.
Okay, could I just ask Brandon, you make sure I'm in the, I'm in the mix?
Yes.
Absolutely. Jane, I think, had mentioned that she had a list, that she had personal emails, cause the town doesn't collect emails of residents. And so, but.
Yes, I did send some emails, but I did forgot you, I'm sorry. And I will, this was just, you know, random attempts because I don't know what efforts the resilience committee is making or the consultant is making.
We consigned a whole consultant to do this work.
Right.
And so.
They should be doing.
Their plan were hinged around the town collecting emails from residents and.
But we don't do that.
We don't do that.
All right, so when I send you the link, if you have um email addresses for neighbors, please forward it to them, cause we do want those of you who own property on these roads to be able to attend.
Okay, I'm probably not aware of any of the other neighbors and, and I suspect you have their emails, but. Uh, we're very, we're very few neighbors really on Cold Storage Road and I'm not familiar with the owners on Factory Road really.
Yeah, sure. All right, well, if anybody on the select board has email addresses for people, um, we should send them this information so that they get it. Brandon, your report.
Uh, status of the audit, uh, the school's half of the audit has been completed and was delivered to them today. Uh, which is great, and so Irene is going to follow up with Fred tomorrow um to make sure that he has everything that he needs from us. Irene has sent him plenty, um, but there's likely still more that he needs and we just need him to ask for it, so we'll stay on it, uh, but we are making progress. And that is the uh twenty twenty-three audit.
I did get in touch with him today, he was gonna let me know, you know, once they get into it. If they needed anything.
I knew you were running payroll today, so I wasn't sure if you got to or not, so.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you. Um, and then this group, the select board as well as um some staff members, so myself, uh Ryan Klein, who in addition to our harbor master is our emergency management director, uh fire chief and EMS chief and Tara um met and worked our way sort of through a uh a, a scenario um and uh just sort of simulating what would happen in a severe winter storm. Um, and one of the key, you know, one of the more helpful pieces of the exercise was just um beginning to think through, you know, what in, what makes stuff in E O C. So who are the people that are coordinating the logistics of an emergency? Um, and, and, and some of the um pieces that go along with it. There are, there's some follow-up that needs to be done. Um, Ryan uh is working on updating uh some of the pieces in our plan, our operations plan. And, you know, Tara has a list of uh some follow-up items for us, like let's keep some uh non-perishable foods in the town office if we need to run a two-day center. Yeah, exactly. And the emergency services uh committee is going to take on um making sure that the shelter group is in place and aware of their, their charge. And so um.
I feel like the shelters group, their charge or whatever they have for a plan ought to be in our emergency fund. There's no included in our emergency, I mean, are you talking about the school? Well, the sheltering group is in charge of the school shelter or whatever sheltering we do.
Right.
But whatever they have for a plan is not in our emergency action plan.
Right, that's true, because when um that group used to be a, a totally different committee and for whatever reason it wasn't incorporated and now um that group is falling under the emergency services committee.
Right.
Of the town, and so I agree that it makes sense for that to be.
There should be.
Incorporated into um the plan, so we just have one place we have to look.
Right.
If there's an emergency, that's a good point.
Um, so just to make sure that we're clear on that, is the emergency services committee, are they tasked with making sure that a shelter group is formed and active or are, are they the new shelter?
I think they're it now and they're meeting tomorrow night here, so.
I, I don't know that that's a fair assignment. It, I think the shelter group, doesn't it typically require some like in-person volunteer?
Well, it doesn't mean that they're the ones that are gonna do all the work. They're just gonna coordinate it.
Come up with a policy.
You know, and, and get the volunteer. It's all under a, you know, a town umbrella.
So the shelter group was not, they were not volunteers in the shelter as well?
I don't have no idea. I, I'm unaware of what that group has done, if anything, in the last couple of years. I think that that group's been kind of dormant. Um, but when we formed the emergency services committee, the select board did decide to have that be under the umbrella of the emergency services committee and it's on their agenda for tomorrow night, coming out of that or tabletop to Britain.
It involves the school too, so any emergency plan they have really ought to be involved in our, not included in our town plan.
Yeah, that was something I was thinking about when we were there, that we really should have that available. Everybody should know what it is.
Uh, that's why I would say, thinking that it's something to have. The, the shelter group.
But the shelter group isn't a school thing. It, the shelter is in the school, but that was volunteers that were coordinated.
Well, just the warming shelters is cool and emergency shelters here.
Right.
So.
But I thought that had changed. I thought it was confusing when we were talking about that at the tabletop exercise. My, I remember hearing from somebody that both the warming shelter and a shelter for everyone who maybe had to sleep there was a school because of the presence of the generator.
I thought that was the whole point of the generator.
Right, right, that that was.
Well, that's not what our plan says. It says emergency shelter is here, warming shelter is school.
Well, our plan, I think, doesn't it also reference the old school district?
Yes, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but that is a plan that was adopted last, seems to be the year.
It needs to be updated, obviously.
It hasn't been updated in a long time. Like, the number for Pendley Emergency Center is, well, it's still a five-nine-six number and it's not. I Googled that in thirty seconds and that's the wrong number that in the packet. I mean, there's some holes in that.
One thing that struck me.
Continuing to review it, bring back those notes, um, we'll make sure it gets run enough to sit.
One thing that struck me from that exercise, you know, the county has whatever, forty, sixty cots. But do we have anything here? Do we have anything at the school if people needed to sleep there?
I thought that Katie said there were like eight. You know, Mike?
I haven't seen any cots.
I don't believe we have any.
I don't think we have any cots. We, I think we have some old, like, World War Two stretchers up in a shelf in the station, but that's about it.
Okay, well, I just thought, all those things that are available, if there is a snow emergency, it's not a snow emergency for just St. George. I mean, they don't have, I was shocked at how little the county has.
Well, I just don't think they were ever gonna make their priority list either.
Right, cause we're too small.
I think we need to get our own stuff.
Okay, well, I mean, sometimes cots are too expensive and people just have those pallets, you know, those.
You can get foam pads, foam sleeping pads.
Yeah, that's what I mean, those mats, yeah, yeah, that you see, you see in shelters.
Well, I think that's what was referenced is that there are, the gym has mats.
Okay.
That those could be used in place of them, um, or in place of them, and then you can get if the, again, yeah, anyway, um, you can get sleeping pads for essentially nothing. People, they're often.
Okay.
I just, I felt like there were some holes in our emergency plan and especially our evacuation plan, which I wouldn't seem to be a plan. And it says that there's a list of people that we're gonna, that, that we know need help, but who has that list? Cause it's not in our packet. So I mean, if the information officer's handed this and says, hey, contact these people, they need help getting out, the information isn't there. So where do they get it? Is one of my questions. There's a lot of references to lists of people that need help or lists of volunteers and they're not in that packet.
I think there was just a group of individuals who have been on the ambulance team for so long and had gone to pick up fires. Like, I know when my father was alive, they called me one time and said, do we need to get him out? So I know that somebody was thinking about him, but all those people have retired now or they're gone for other reasons, so, yeah.
Yeah, but the departments are still doing the same work.
But it's just, they, yeah, they know who they visit a lot.
They do, but it might not be the department that's handed the packet and said to call these people. You know what I mean? They have to point an information officer at that meeting and the other one's calling for help. You know, if they need, it says in the packet that there's, that we don't have any equipment to clear roads, but a lot of locals have equipment. But it didn't say who. It didn't say who to call, it didn't say how to contact them, and I mean.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, we are still a very small town.
We are.
One person, there isn't ever gonna be an information officer that's handed this packet and expected to enact it without insulting our fire chief or EMS chief or any of the folks that are on that team.
But I have to say that despite all these holes that were identified.
There are plenty of holes.
I, I felt comfortable that you and the fire department and the ambulance department can handle it, and Tara. I mean, I did feel confident and, you know, in terms of handling an emergency.
I guess the only thing that I still worried about, I know how unlikely it is, but if we had a wildfire and had to evacuate, the fact that we have no plan even remotely of how that might work. You know, it, I would like us to have something, you know, like cert, the harbor master would contact lobstermen and say, go to Port Clyde Landing or Tons Harbor Landing if you look close to there to get out. Um, people who don't have that as an option, you know, or whatever, because most of the other emergency things we talked about, there's more warning. You know, like with a snow emergency, but not if there were a fire. And even though I, it's very unlikely, we ought to have a little five bullets of what we would do. Did you have other things in your report?
I, dude. Did we, we feel like we left that with, like, what's the follow-up there? Am I waiting for?
Well, I think the emergency services committee will work on the shelter, warming shelter, um.
And.
Revitalizing that.
Building the holes in that, that plan in general?
Um, they can do that.
I don't know who's responsible for that.
I mean, they can work with Ryan on that.
Update. I mean, I know we're a small town, it's not likely, but we should still have a solid plan in place and our emergency services should be trained in those situations, you know, and if they're not, then they should be.
Oh, I, I, I agree that our plan should be solid and needs updating. That wasn't my pushback at all. I don't know that making sure that lists of who in town has plows and who is, who may need extra assistance.
Well, no, but I mean, there's, there's a form in there that you can fill out. It's an old form. Maybe we need to update that, but there are forms you can fill out that they, we can reach, put it on our website, and if somebody has a big bulldozer, they could say, hey, I have a big bulldozer. Call me in, in emergency, you know, I mean, we could have that list, we could have people, we could volunteer for that list. We don't have to carry it around with us, but.
There's evidence.
Yeah, I mean, why not? If there are people willing to help.
Well, and I thought that in general, the volunteer signup list was something that we could invite people to.
And that was discussed doing at an E O C. I, I don't know why, why wouldn't that be on our website or at the town office? If you wanted to be an emergency volunteer, you could come in and fill out paperwork ahead of time and get.
Yeah, I frankly don't really wanna meet anyone for the first time in the middle of an emergency.
I mean, and they could be all signed up and they just get a phone call to come volunteer instead of, hey, please come help us and then nobody shows up.
Well, those are all things we can work through, but it's worth having the emergency services group talk about it some more.
And definitely don't call R S U thirteen for school buses.
No.
Been a while.
I mean, it feels like Brian should work with that committee on getting this up to.
Well, that would be great if you're willing.
Okay. Put ideas for it, I think.
No, that, it's tomorrow night at six that is the next meeting of that, if you wanna.
Where do they meet?
Here, in this room.
I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, Irene and I.
We just stay here and then it'll be.
Irene and I are still working on closing out the Cold Storage Road project. We're waiting on a couple forms returned from uh our contractors and engineers and all that, um, but should wrap it up. Uh, this month, which would be great. I met with Christina Watten recently um regarding dispersment warrants. Her question was around whether or not we could still, even once you all approved uh the warrants for uh dispersment, whether or not we could still then just cut a check for the, for one twelfth of the budget. I told her that I was fairly certain that the check would have to match the warrant. Um, and so I think she was gonna look into some different things and we have a scheduled meeting again in December. I received a fellow request on behalf of the school uh regarding any emails about a certain curriculum service that they um are utilizing. I forwarded that request onto the school um and replied to the requister that saying that I had received it and that it would be fulfilled by the superintendent for the intent business days. It's not, I have received them on behalf of the school in the past. This happened around uh the HVAC system as well.
Is it a governmental request or who's, who's the requister?
Um, I do not remember. Uh, the woman's name. Um, I do not remember. Uh, the woman's name is, I can't pull up her name. Woman's name is Kathleen Oppenheimer. She's from Bethesda, Maryland, from Oppenheimer Speech and Language LLC. Christina shared some of the specifics of like, there's a it's a, I, I don't want to do a fore job of explaining this, um, but it is a, I, and, and honestly, if you want to learn more about it, I wish.
No, I just don't understand what it is, what the mechanism is, what the process is.
When you get a Freedom of Information Request?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I must have missed that. I didn't hear that.
Sorry, I said boa.
Oh, yeah.
That's why. Oh, okay.
That's why I was confused.
I didn't understand that. All right, never mind, never mind.
Okay, great. You've all learned by now, um, Judy has resigned from her position and will only be with us for November meetings. Really, really grateful for uh, the work that you've done for the last year plus. It's been um, top-notch and uh, very thorough and diligent and um.
Can I just say I really enjoyed the summary? Transcript minutes? Maybe we could discuss that sometime.
We, um, what Brandon and I talked about was um, that he and Bill Batty and Judy would talk about um, the different kinds of software that are available and what, what our options are now, and also since the last time we talked about this, we start, have started posting the YouTube videos. So, in the past, we continued with the full transcripts because we've heard from the community how helpful those are, but now that there are a shocking number of people watching YouTube videos and listening to them in their car and stuff. But, but we would, if we are gonna rely on those as a, a full record of some kind, we need to be thinking about, are those gonna be backed up somewhere, or are we gonna decide that summaries are good enough? And if those disappear from the internet, then we don't care about that. So we'll look at that once we get some advice from the pros.
In the meantime, I will ask Aaron Den um, to sort of help us uh, cover some gaps, just so that uh, we're not, so that we can respect Judy's time and also not have to add on to anyone here's work.
And just so you know, my plan is, again, to attend the meetings in November, and I'm obviously behind on the transcripts now. Um, I'd love to be able to do them in summaries, but regardless, either way, um, I will make sure I get everything to you guys in December. You know, we know, by December kind of thing, so I will not drop the phone, leave you hanging, because I know that kind of happened down the way.
That did happen, that was.
So, um, but just.
Summary minutes from here on out, because knowing that we have YouTube.
I would be, yeah, I, I definitely would be. I'd have time to read thirty pages of transcript before.
Thirty, that would be good.
I really don't.
Flapping forty-seven.
I'll not work on Monday. We usually get them Sunday, Monday, and I can't, I don't, I almost never have read the whole thing.
Glad you brought it up, Cam, yeah, it's good.
So are, is that, you all are right with Judy, just?
I do read them and I frequently add some. Additional back and forth from the discussion to her summary, because I do feel.
Well, that, that can still all happen.
Right, we, we all need to be thinking about the fact that this is the permanent record, and here we've been looking at the stuff from a hundred and thirty years ago, you know, someday it's gonna be these minutes.
Is it possible to save the transcripts but have summary minutes?
And that's something I can talk with Bill about. I, my understanding is the town owns this software. I downloaded it onto my device just to do what I have to do, but the town has the account, so I'm assuming the town has all of this.
So we'll be looking at all those things, so I think that is.
Yeah, we could save raw transcripts.
Summary minutes.
Sometimes it will be useful and sometimes it won't.
Right, I think that's the agreed way to go.
We only wish you guys did agree to this a year ago.
But I, I think the reason for it really has a lot to do with the YouTube video.
And that was about six months ago or whatever it was.
Yeah, we weren't sure that it was gonna stick around. It started as a trial.
People seem to like it.
Uh, the last piece is that um, Eve is out uh, and limited for, but he just had an operation done. Um, and Ryan is out using a lot of vacation. Um, he's out most of this month unless there's any sort of emergency that comes up. And so, just thought that you all should know that we are um, a little short-staffed, and those two specifically do most of our sort of uh, physical labor-driven um, work, so.
So let's hope it doesn't snow in November, in November, before Steve's back.
Yeah, well, he gave me a whole tutorial uh, on the plow, but either way, we should hope it doesn't snow. And that's all I have.
Okay, committee reports. We'll go through these quickly because we do wanna have a, at least a short executive session, and we need to decide on a special meeting date and time about the basketball issue. So the planning board.
Uh, the planning board has not met since we last discussed, and it was supposed to meet tomorrow night, and it's been canceled because there's no pending applications.
Okay. I know, um, the budget committee's subcommittee is reviewing trust documents.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's our first meeting.
We appreciate, and I, I asked Brandon if you remember the first meeting in December last year is when we had the people from the first contact with our investments, so we're gonna invite them to the December meeting again. Um, we don't need to hear anymore from the cemetery or emergency services, conservation commission.
They are meeting this Thursday at four o'clock here.
I did meet with uh, Lorraine and Ken, and we signed a bunch of paperwork that was necessary, clarifying easement and a, uh, action and writing, and so I believe everything's done for the town's part of the old Blue's farm.
Well, he sent me something I'll have to sign once they fill in the blanks.
Right.
From the lawyers. But I do think that's almost done. Shelf fish committee.
Um, the shelf fish committee met on the twenty-first. There's not really much going on right now, other than the warden is dealing with a particular clamor that thinks he should be able to take more than others, so he's been dealing with that, and their next meeting is November eighteenth at five-thirty in Warren.
And I attended the solid waste and recycling committee meeting, and their focus at the moment is on increasing composting, which will decrease tipping fees. Um, they're contacting restaurants and caterers in town to find out if they'd be amenable to have stuff picked up, and they looked at the different types of containers that would need to be purchased, because they, you would pick up the compost at somebody's curb, take that away and leave them clean container for next time, and obviously in the summer, you'd have to pick it up much more frequently than in the winter, so, um.
Do you think it's a very cool project, though? It's, it's a creative way to sort of uh, put costs there at in, in two ways, you know, reducing the tipping fees and increasing revenue um, from a service that, you know, currently sells out. I think it's uh, you know, it's ambitious because it adds more work, um, but it.
They sell a lot of compost though.
Yeah, they sell out every year.
That's good stuff.
You know, but it adds work to them without adding much cost, you know, the staff, so I, I do think it's a very um, well, I'm just, I'm a big fan of them, at least exploring this, this program.
And they did a survey. Some of us may have filled out the survey about composting, and I wish I had brought the results. What was interesting was a fair number of people in town do composting, but the majority of them do it at home, they have home composting instead of taking it to the town and.
Many people do know they could take it to the town.
Right, so I think that education and a pilot program, all these things will be useful for getting the word out. The resilience committee.
Besides the two meetings I've already discussed, there's another meeting on November fifth um, regarding the climate action plan, and I think Letitia and Erin are gonna present mapping issues regarding climate change for the two towns. And that's gonna take place in South Thomaston at the library, and it is November fifth at, I think it's at four, or five o'clock, five o'clock. So this one.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's it, that's it for the three meetings.
A lot going on in the background. So I guess we should look at our calendars and see if we could meet next Monday and since we're on the basketball issue.
Um, should we reach out to the rec committees if they could move, they're not gonna meet before next Monday, so maybe they should have a meeting this week.
If they can, I think certainly in prison.
If Brandon can or I can reach out.
Or, yeah, I mean, Ashley is accountable to that.
Yeah, that's something they should weigh in on for sure. Yeah, I'd really like, if you know where the school was standing, like, clearly, you know, they're not rec, but they do, they represent the student body, so. Feel like they should weigh in on.
Well, I had the one, I figured out that I didn't. So are other people available at six o'clock next Monday? Monday is the tenth.
Yes.
I think it's an important issue in that we should, we should, you know, we should meet.
I'm coaching the boys team, so it'll be interesting to see how this works then.
And um, we will need to get in touch with both Kelly and Fluss.
Okay.
All right then, we'll plan to meet about that then. I don't think we have any other follow-up items. So um, at this point, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session to um, discuss legal advice regarding the status of the English Town Road West. May I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor that follow us? I will let you know, Jimmy.